Good evening, I'd like to call the order. The Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, Regular School Board Meeting of Tuesday, March 12th, 2013. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can you please do the roll call, please?
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Landwehr?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Ms. Pa- oh, sorry. Mr. Larkin?
I'm here.
Uh, Ms. Palmer? Here.
Thank you very much. Just want to announce, um, we'll, we will be electronically conferencing a school board member from a resort in Cabo San Lucas, Mexico. We all feel sorry for him. As is our, uh, custom, our mission statement is Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Next on our agenda is Agenda Approvals: Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. Announcements, March 19th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM is the School Board Work Session here in the Community Room. March 21st, Thursday, 6:00 PM is a ribbon-cutting and dedication at Highland Elementary that was rescheduled because of the snow day. March 25th through 29th, no school at a spring break. April 5th, Friday, no school as a grading day in the district. April 9th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. April 16th, Tuesday, 5:30 PM is the School Board Work Session here in the Community Room. Okay, next on our agenda Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence?
Mr. Chair, members, there are none.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move to communication to the Board. At this time, any citizen or employee, employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and also please be mindful of data private information. Does anyone like to come before the Board? We had a person come before the Board this night to generally talk about bullying in one of the schools, and, um, we've, um, and the Superintendent volunteered to take the issue up with this person. All right. Next on our agenda is a Consent Agenda. Minutes of the February 12th, 26th School Board Meetings, Personnel Report and Treasurers Report from January 2013. Do I have a motion to move the Consent Agenda forward?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Laura, seconded by Lori. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion has carried. Thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda this evening, Discussion Reports and Information Items. This is where Board members can report on Board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board Education, and so, um, I will start with Ms. Palmer.
Um, well, I had a relatively uneventful week. Um, I, um, I normally attend the 916, that's the Special Education District, um, School Board Meeting. Um, that's on the first Tuesday of the month, but of course, they also canceled. So, we had an emergency meeting on the Thursday to take care of matters that couldn't wait till the next School Board, until the next scheduled meeting. Uh, the rest could hold over. Um, and some of that information is actually going to come before this Board at both the work-study session and, and on. So, some interesting things about our, um, our, um, ALC program and, um, some of the new construction that they're talking about. So, I look forward to seeing that information shared with everybody and keep everybody up to date.
Great, thanks for your report. Can we go with Mr. Larkin?
Um, I have not had a lot of activity in the United States in the last week or so. As far as comments, I guess I, the ribbon-cutting I will not be able to attend. I will still not be back in town. So, I apologize for that. But other than that, I have nothing else to report at this point.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Meyer?
Um, well, I got to spend some time with Director Stunkel, I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly, um, to learn more about the early childhood program and the ECFE program and visit some of the classes and read stories to some of the pre-K and ECFE, which was really a fun day yesterday. And then I got to meet with Superintendent Kelly and take a tour of all the different schools, um, see everything that's going on and all the activity, and it was really inspiring and a wonderful day to see all the exciting things going on in the school. And I guess, you know, thank you to everybody that took time yesterday to, um, show me around and spend some time with me and answer my questions. And, um, it was just a perfect reminder of why we sit at this table, and it was a really great day. And that's pretty much it for me.
Great, thank you. Mr. Landwehr?
Well, I had a great meeting with Superintendent Kelly and Director Hannikins and Director Burkus about, um, SchoolView, which is our, um, computer internet reporting system for parents and, um, and, you know, as, as the liaison for TIES, which is our computer cooperative. Um, I had the privilege of learning a lot about SchoolView and all the capabilities that SchoolView has. And I was just curious as to, you know, the implementation of those capabilities, and, um, I think, my personal opinion is it would make a big difference in the district if we get them all rolled out and they're all available to our, to us as, uh, as part of our membership and ties without extra costs. So, things like, uh, individual, um, uh, plans and goals for students, Sparks, which are students' passions, so that, um, everybody knows and, and can, and can work with those passions to help, uh, tailor their plans in a way that makes it engaging for them. And also, a calendar system which allows, um, the school calendar to be downloaded on to parents and teachers' individuals' calendar, uh, individual calendars, for example, on their smartphones, so that, um, so that it's very easy to find out what's going on in the district. So, a lot more capabilities, and I'm sure TIES has added more since I, I last went to their conference, but, um, um, I'm, I'm just pleased to hear that we are working on those, and it's just going to take some time, but, um, the sooner the better. So, thank you for that. Uh, and then also, I attended the choir concerts. Um, choirs are getting in top form to go on their trip to Memphis and, uh, and Nashville, along with the band, so it was great. Hats off to them and, and hope they have a wonderful time. And I also went to a Lions meeting and talked to constituents.
Great, thank you. Ms. Lee?
Well, it was relatively uneventful, but I was, uh, invited by Springbrook to the Springbrook Spree on Sunday, which was an event fundraiser for, um, kids. That they do a lot of the after-school stuff, and they mentioned Columbia Heights, which was nice. I was, they always are very complimentary, but I appreciated the invitation and, um, and I was able to have some nice conversations with Representative Lane and Senator Goodwin, um, and am planning to meet with each one of them individually for some conversation about some of the things that I've taken on, and also just about what's going on in the educational process. Also with Connie Bernardi, she was at that same spree, so it was kind of fun. But it was, it was very nice, it was a very nice event. Um, good food, and the Lions were there also, uh, helping out, and it was, uh, put on, catered by tasties, so. A lot of Columbia Heights stuff that is brought about throughout the, the community through Coon Rapids, Blaine, Anoka, Hennepin, and all that, so. I appreciated that. I also had a nice conversation, um, I met with, uh, the County Attorney Tony Palumbo, um, last week, just to have some conversation about things that are going around on, in Anoka County. And also, he asked if he could, uh, tour the school sometime, so. Um, that would be something that would be really nice to do, and he'd like to be involved with the, the events prior to prom. Um, so he, I said, I shot him your name, Superintendent Kelly, so you could do that. But other than that, and then I've been meeting with people across District 5 and some constituents.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I, I'm going to cut mine short, but I had a couple of meetings with Superintendent Kelly, and, um, that's, um, all I, basically all I've been doing all week, so I know Superintendent Kelly has a report, so.
Certainly. Mr. Chair, members, we, I met with, uh, the President of Local 710, Coleman Nimoroff. It was our, and our monthly meeting, and we had, uh, shared, um, common issues and concerns. Um, I attended the Quarterly WMEP Superintendent Advisory Group Meeting, and the focus of that meeting, um, was pretty serious. It was about the, um, magnet school admissions criteria process and further discussion of the Minneapolis Public Schools' requests for continuance of programs, or, um, or they would decide to leave. So, we were looking at it for ramifications on our schools, on our school district. Um, I did attend the Northeast Metro Superintendent Meeting, and the points of discussion there, um, were focused on funding for all-day, everyday kindergarten and also on integration legislation. Um, there was also a little bit of talk about the dissolution of the East Metro Integration District Schools because, um, Roseville will be taking the Harambe, um, school under its wing, and, um, Crosswinds will either be, become part of the, uh, the Purpitch or perhaps South Washington County, because that integration district has decided to, um, do away with the schools and focus on the professional development. I'm just summarizing. So, in two back-to-back meetings, there was some pretty serious conversations about both magnet schools and integration funding and being able to carry on. The principals and district administrators and I have been involved with, um, E-12 staffing, and that's been going on for about six weeks. And then, um, Director Bennett and Principal DeWitt and Faculty Member Diane Scully and I are project managers for the teacher evaluation process, and we went to another full-day training. And, um, two of those individuals, Principal DeWitt and Director Bennett, will be presenting tonight on some of the things we've been working on. Uh, Faculty Member Diane Scully would be here with us tonight, but she has severe bronchitis and had to bow out at the last minute, so we wish her well. The admin team has completed the third round of non-tenure teacher evaluations, which by law has to be completed by this time of year. And I did enjoy spending lots of time with different Board members throughout, um, uh, the week, and it was a special treat to have, um, a Board member tour our schools, and we hope we didn't wear her out. We certainly enjoyed, um, Lori. And, um, as was already said, I met with Member Landwehr along with Directors and, um, Chair Bardell as well. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much. Next up is, uh, Mr. Corliss, and, um, he's going to update the Board on impending changes within the North Suburban Conference.
Mr. Chairman, members of the School Board, Superintendent Kelly, good evening. I believe you have my high-tech, um, handout for you. Um, just wanted to let you know that, uh, just what's been going on with the North Suburban Conference. Uh, when we entered it in 2006, there were 11 schools, there are still 11 schools, but after this, the completion of this school year, it will shrink to eight, um, with the northernmost schools choosing to leave. And as of last week, St. Louis Park and, uh, Robbinsdale-Cooper informed the Conference that they would be leaving effective the end of next school year, leaving a six-team conference. And really, that's all the information I have for you right now. It's a pretty dynamic situation still, and things will happen, and we're always going to make sure that, that our kids get taken care of. Um, I think, I guess if I were to say one thing I would tell you, to remember that we have to carry on a little differently than maybe some of the schools there because we were placed originally.
Great.
Um, so we have to make su- we're not going to find ourselves without a conference. And that, that I can assure you of, and we're going to do everything we can to get in the right spot, wherever that may be. But that is the facts as they are today. I'll take questions if you want, otherwise, I'll let you move on.
Any questions for, yeah, go ahead.
So, this would be a different conference than what we have been in?
Well, as of right now, no other than this, um, for the 2014-15 school year, right now, there would only be six schools. Um, the six listed there, Benilde St. Margaret's, Columbia Heights, Fridley, Irondale, Spring Lake Park, and Totino Grace. That's a pretty, there's kind of two, three distinct groups, if you think about it. So, that may or may not exist in 2014-15. Um, that's, I guess, my message to you. But there's no concrete plans of any of those yet. But what we do know is that St. Louis Park and Cooper will not be with us after next school year. And the other three, we knew were leaving at the end of this, this school year. I think that was pretty well-known.
Right.
Does that answer it?
Yep, that does, thank you.
Excellent, yeah.
I'd just like to add that Mark and I will be attending various meetings regarding this subject, and we will keep you up, updated as it unfolds. As, as Mark has said, it's a very fluid situation, and we'll just have to see how people make their decisions.
Great, thank you, Mark. Thanks for keeping us up to date. Next on our agenda this evening is, uh, Highland Elementary Building Vision Card, and we have Dwayne Burkus and Michelle DeWitt, Highland Elementary Principal, this evening. And we have... Matthew Arnold.
Chairperson Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. I'm, uh, here with Highland tonight. Uh, we've been now with, this is our third school, I believe, that we're presenting our scorecard from the strategic plan. And, uh, if you've driven by or been to Highland lately, you've seen their sign out in front that they are a school, a celebration school. Uh, very proud of the work that's gone on at Highland to close the achievement gap, to raise their reading scores to some of the highest levels we've seen in any of our buildings in a very, very long time. Lots of great things going on at Highland. This year, um, like previous years, uh, when you look at the kind of work that's going on there, I, I like to say that Principal DeWitt, along with her dean, Matthew Arnold, run a very tight ship. Uh, they have, uh, a lot of great work that goes on during class and then planning and debriefing and working as teams, teacher teams. Uh, it's, uh, it's a place, I think, where you go and you see execution of, of the plan, uh, down to the, to the details that make it all work so well. So, I'm going to turn it over like I have in the past. Thank you for being here, and I'll let you present.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, we are presenting the Highland Strategic Plan and Scorecard, and our first slide shows our pride at Highland, our new kindergarten and pre-K addition. So, a nice picture of what it looks like from the inside.
Um, and then we'll move on to enrollment. Um, it has consistently grown at Highland, um, from a low of 460 students in 2008 to about 500 students this year in 2013. Um, and each year, our kindergarten classes average 100 students, so that's great to see.
All right, our demographic data closely reflects district breakdown. Through responsive classroom and Families All Matter curriculum, we celebrate diversity at Highland. In May, we will hold our First World Cultures Day, so we're excited about that event to share the diversity of our student body.
And then this slide just shows, um, the free and reduced percentages for our school, which again, are similar to the district percentages.
So, at Highland, we are currently 7.4 percent, um, 7.4%, of our students receive special education service, and 39.4% of students receive EL service. This is the highest, that's English Language Service, the highest percentage across the district. We currently have seven EL teachers, that their primary focus is our literacy program and developing our English learners.
And then here's the MCA data from the past three years. Um, you can see that all subjects are showing growth, which is great. Um, and our reading growth especially has been supported by the MRC tutors, so the Minnesota Reading Corps tutors, as well as the new reading specialist position that support our most struggling students, K through 5.
I'm sure you've seen this slide a few times before. Um, again, this is the strategic roadmap that all of the buildings across the district are working under. Um, at Highland, all staff members represented the roadmap last spring. We focused again on the roadmap this fall during Workshop Week. Um, Highland staff promote the mission statement through our communication with families. It's prominently posted on my newsletter, as well as information that we send home to families.
Um, so then moving into the scorecard rows specifically, it might be a little bit, um, hard to read, but here, A1, um, use of an, uh, established standards-based curriculum. Um, we have 85 to 89% of our classrooms showing that. Um, the next row, licensed, licensed staff actively engaged in PLCs. Um, we have 70 to 89% of our licensed staff engaged in PLCs on a monthly basis at least. Um, and then the final one is use of effective teaching strategies, and we have 81 to 89% of all teachers, um, showing that. So, a good place to start.
I just wanted to add a, a little detail about the PLCs, Professional Learning Communities at Highland. Currently, all of our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade teachers are participating in math PLCs through Region 11, so they're actually going for some off-site training and working with their grade-level teams along with a facilitator inside the building. So, um, currently, Mr. Arnold is facilitating with 5th grade, and we have a lead teacher facilitating with 4th grade, and I'm facilitating with 3rd grade. So, we're really ensuring that the training that the teachers are getting, we're turning that around and using it in the classrooms. Um, kindergarten, our kindergarten teachers are taking on the PLC of parent involvement this year. It's Highland's turn for reach, um, as well as just trying to really boost our overall parent involvement in the building. And in grades 1 and 2, their PLC of choice this year was, along with our building goal, of writing across the curriculum. So, their PLC focus is six traits for writing. All right, um, so the second slide of the scorecard, A7, is presence of multi-tiered interventions for academics, and we're at Level 4, 85 to 89% of students. A12 is participation in arts, activities, and athletics, and we were at Vision, Level 5, in that area. A14, participation gap between student groups, participating in arts, activities, and athletics. Um, we were at Level 4, and we really used data from ONCOUR participation in the Wilder Survey for that. And last one is A15, parent engagement points of contact. And again, we were at Level 4, with 70 to 79% of parents identifying more than one, um, point of contact beyond conferences. And just a little bit about the points of contact, Highland really has a focus of bringing parents into our building. We have a, a minimum of one parent engagement activity per month, usually more than one, but something sponsored by our PTO, and then usually something sponsored by our building as well. So, having different focuses, for example, February, we had I Love to Read Month with our Ice Cream for Books Night, co-sponsored by both the PTO and the building. So, we had a combination of parents and staff members putting on that really large event.
And then the next rows look at our growth percentages as measured by the MAP exams. Um, so for math, we had 49% of our 2nd through 5th graders meet their goal, their target for what they were supposed to grow from the fall to the fall. Um, the next row is our reading growth. We had, um, 63% of students meet our reading growth goal, which is really great to see that, that progress is being made. Um, and then, interesting that the percentage of students by student groups, so looking at some of those achievement gaps in growth, there really was less than a 10% difference. The only large difference that we saw was eight percentage points for black students in math, so really, um, we're providing a really equitable education for our students at Highland, which is great to see. Um, and then the last one there is for our curriculum-based measurements, so our CBMs. Um, we're seeing 80, 80% of our Tier 2 and Tier 3 students are being assessed on a twice-monthly basis at least. Again, with our MRC tutors and then the new reading specialist position, we're able to really target our instruction for our most struggling readers.
All right, um, moving on into Part B of the scorecard. B5 is comprehensive assessment, um, MCA reading scores. We were at, this year at Vision, for that, with 75% or better of all elementary students assessed were proficient. We were at 80% for our 3rd through 5th graders. Um, for MCA math scores, we were at 59% of 3rd through 5th graders were proficient in the math. Um, for science, we were at 38% of our 5th graders were proficient on the science test. And for MCA gap to standard between the student groups, we were at, um, less than six percentage points different between our black students. Um, that was our largest gap, 6% on the math exam. But again, at Vision, with less than 14% difference for any student group. Um, some focus areas for Highland on math. We're really, again, focusing through our Region 11 PLC development, which is math. Um, also, ensuring that students are getting interventions as needed for math. We know that that's an area where we need to focus more at this time than in literacy. So, really finding ways where our Tier 2 and Tier 3 students can get extra help in math.
Um, but our proficiency scores for both math and reading were right at the state average, so that was good to see. And then the last two have to do with behavior. Um, the first one is the difference between those student groups and referrals out of class. Um, and there, we were at a Level 3. Um, our data showed that 39% of our students are black, and 63% of our referrals are for black students, so a bit of over-representation. Um, when you factor in their daily attendance, that gap closes a little bit, so it is, um, not quite as equitable as this data shows. Um, and then our out-of-school suspensions, um, we had less than 150 incidents. Um, last year, we are, we're at 43, and this year, we've only had 24 so far. So, really, low levels of out-of-school suspensions, which is great to see. We're keeping students in-class learning as much as we can.
All right, some of our achievements. So, we thought we would present information about the committees that we have at Highland. So, regularly meeting committees, we have Leadership, Equity, Technology, Parent Involvement, which is a new committee for us this school year. Um, grade-level team meetings, they meet, um, at a minimum of two times per month. Um, some grade levels meet several times per week. Responsive Classroom Committee, um, Student Assistance Team and Child Study Team. Um, and then the last is Climate, Culture, and Community, and this is really bridging the gap between, um, the staff and parents as well as just building community between our staff members. And the picture that we have to share with you was one of our kindergarten classes on the 100th Day of School. It says, "Highland Students Rock the 100th Day."
And then some celebrations that we're having, um, with our different committees. Um, with the Leadership Committee, um, we've ranked 97th percentile for closing the achievement gap as a school, which was a big part of us winning the Celebration status, which was very exciting for us. Um, for our parent involvement, um, we're celebrating the families and staff participating in the REACH program, which is happening as we speak right now, um, at Highland. Um, and then also reaching out, um, through the Parent Involvement Committee, um, to that team and including some key parents in that. Um, for Equity Committee, um, we're having a lot of open and collaborative discussions around equity. Um, the Equity Team has led a few staff meetings this year. Um, we've attended trainings, um, and there's a book club that's going on, just trying to develop a number of equity leaders at our school to really push the envelope in that sense, um, at Highland. For the RC, the Responsive Classroom Committee, um, we're doing community building through grade-level-led all-school morning meetings, where we all get together in the gym and for a short half-hour meeting in the morning just to kick off that day that we do once a month. Um, and then also just consistency, and the RC Team has led some trainings around responsive classroom techniques for the whole staff, just to make sure that we're all implementing those strategies in a really consistent way across the building. And then our Technology Committee, um, has been working close with the Technology Integrationist positions. Students in grades 2 through 5 have created e-portfolios where they are going to store their, um, work that they've been doing from 2nd grade all the way through 5th grade, and then that'll continue on until the high schools. So, that's really exciting work that our Technology Committee is doing.
All right, and of course, we wanted to share with everyone that Highland Elementary is a Celebration School. Hopefully, you have seen the banner on the front of our school as well. So, we're excited about this recognition. Um, Highland was recognized by the Minnesota Department of Education. Um, as a Celebration School, the selection was based on student growth, closing the achievement gap, and our application for Celebration status.
And then some initiatives that our building is- And then some initiatives that our building is having with each of the committees. Leadership is going to continue to plan on delivering professional development, supporting all the initiatives across the building. The parent involvement committee is going to start a training for volunteers at our school, so getting parent volunteers, identifying who those key people are, and then the needs in the building in order to get more parents involved in the school building, and having a training so they're actually being, you know, as useful as possible in the classrooms. Equity committee is going to continue to have in the dialogues around race, increasing the amount of staff that are attending those WMEP trainings, and increasing the staff that are involved in the book clubs. There's an equity bulletin board in the lounge, and we're going to be doing some surveys out to staff to collect some data about kind of where our mindsets are with race, and then where to move forward with that. The responsive classroom committee is going to continue a book study that they've done with the power of our words, really looking at the importance of teacher language and how we speak to our students in a really respectful and responsive way. And then the technology committee, over the summer of 2012, all the classrooms were outfitted with mounted projectors, and the new kindergarten and pre-K rooms all have Promethean boards, so it's continual training and practice, getting used to all those fancy gadgets that we have now, which are exciting.
All right, so our SMART goal for literacy by the spring of 2013, sixty percent of Highland students will be Tier One as measured by CBMs, and in the fall, we were at forty-nine percent. And then by the spring of 2013, eighty percent of Highland's third through fifth grade students will score at the proficient level on the MCA reading test. Last spring, we were at seventy-nine percent. So again, we want to hold at that high rate of proficiency. The graphic at the bottom was part of I Love to Read Month, just showing that reading and literacy in general is very important at Highland. We really focus year-round. February is a special month. All students receive a minimum of ninety minutes of literacy instruction daily, and also reading interventions as needed.
Then our SMART goals for math, I'm looking at MAP growth. By the spring of 2013, we want sixty percent or more of our first-grade students to meet that growth goal that's set for them, and seventy percent of second through fifth-grade students to meet that growth goal, increasing from sixty-five percent to seventy percent. And then this year in the MCAs, we hope by the spring of 2013 to have seventy percent of our third through fifth graders proficient on the MCA test, growing from sixty-one percent last year.
All right, in science, our growth goal is by the spring of 2013, forty-five percent of Highland fifth-grade students will score proficient on the MCA science test, and we were at thirty-eight percent last year. Forty-five percent would take us to the state average for the fifth-grade science test.
And then for behavior, since we do have low office referrals and out-of-school suspensions, we're going to take a look at reducing our time-to-think referrals by ten percent, as well as maintaining incident levels for our Black students at an equitable level.
All right, and our last slide are just some fun pictures that we have to talk about some of our initiatives. In the upper left-hand corner, you'll notice that Columbia Heights Police Car is visiting school. We have had a very strong partnership with the Columbia Heights Police Department. Over the last three years, we've had many officers and office staff members work with Highland students, presenting books with an anti-bullying message. They do lots of visits, that we've now taken that work with the Columbia Heights Police Department to the next level when Big Brothers Big Sisters was implemented at Highland. We have several officers and office staff workers coming in on a weekly basis as a big brother or big sister to Highland students, so we continue a strong partnership with them. We, the middle picture just notes that we really reach out to the community and broader community as well. We did a pennies-for-patience, second year doing that with really strong results. The third upper picture is Girls' Night at Highland, and this night is one-hundred percent spearheaded by PTO and family members that organize the event, get donations for all of the supplies that we use. It's just a great event for girls. We also have a Boys' Night that's coming up in April. And then just showing some of our curricular activities, we continue to plant a tree every year with our kindergarteners, so we're growing our front lawn. They also use it as part of their science project. And then just some of the work that our little children are doing in mathematics is the bottom corner picture. Questions that you have for us or comments?
I just have a comment. I commend you for all the parents and community involvement in the school. I had the privilege of attending one of your REACH sessions, and it was amazing, so. And just the focus of, right even at the elementary level, of college and career readiness, and what do we need to do to get to that point by the time they graduate from high school, is just fabulous, so, great job.
Thank you.
And I think the schools that follow the best practices around the country, I've seen from our national conferences, are doing exactly what you're doing, so.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thanks. Great.
I just, it's just, I can't believe how much has been accomplished in the past couple of years, and it's really, really looking good. And the literacy scores are really definitely something to be proud of, and let's keep that up.
Thank you.
If they, if they don't know how to read, they can't, you know, what do they say? First you learn to read, and then you read to learn.
Right.
So we got to make sure we focus on that. Thank you.
Great. You have something?
Thanks, Chair. I just want to say congratulations. School of Celebration is awesome, and we have really made us proud. The enrollment going up and up, I mean, you guys are working hard for that, and it shows. So continue doing successful things. We're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next agenda item is Teacher Evaluation Work Group. The board will be presented with information on the Teacher Evaluation Working Group, and as Superintendent Kelly said, it will be Lindsey Bennett, Director of Human Services, and Michelle DeWitt, Highland Elementary Principal.
Good evening, Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. As Superintendent Kelly mentioned before, Diane Scully really wanted to be here, but we sent her home at three o'clock and told her to go home and get better.
Thank you.
So we're representing her tonight, too, so she was, she's been a big part of this process, too, but needs to go home and get better. The committee right now is Superintendent Kelly, myself, Principal DeWitt, and Diane Scully. We've been meeting pretty much since October to get started on this process. We just wanted to give you kind of an update on what's going on. The rationale is, in the 2012 Teacher Evaluation Statute, a school board and exclusive representative of the teachers must develop a teacher evaluation and peer review process for probationary and continuing contract teachers through joint agreement. The process must meet the legislative guidelines, and districts must begin evaluating teachers under this for the 1415 school year. So it seems really far away, but there's a lot of work to be done, so it'll be here before we know it. So we're going to start meeting, I think our first meeting is in April with the committee. There is a default model, so if the school board and exclusive representatives of the union cannot come to an agreement on a teacher evaluation process, we do go back to the state model. But right now, we're planning to meet and come to a collaborative agreement. So both the Minnesota Parent of Education and Education Minnesota, which is the teachers' union, recommend, start planning on how to create an evaluation plan that will work for your district. The goal is to come to an agreement. So the best bet for us is to come to an agreement so we do have the best evaluation that meets that our district's needs.
Excuse me. All right, critical questions yet to be answered. The financial impact on district resources, obviously, there is a financial impact based on the amount of work that we will need to do in all three years of teacher evaluation. Considering whether or not this will be an unfunded mandate, it's something that we'll find out as the legislature works through a lot of these questions. District policy changes, student data used for thirty-five percent. Right now, under statute, thirty-five percent of the teacher evaluation will be tied to student achievement data. Loss of local control, which is what we hope will not happen, so we hope to come to agreement so that we're able to maintain local control of our teacher evaluation program. And then legislative changes. Right now, there are some items up at the legislature, some small pieces of statute that could change. And kind of the next set of critical questions, one would be PLCs, again, the professional learning communities that I talked about earlier in my presentation, and peer review. So how would that look in Columbia Heights? Measure of student engagement, which is another piece of the new teacher evaluation. We have to measure student engagement and what that will look like, because that's not a current measure that we look at in teacher evaluation. Creating authentic growth and meaningful professional development, that is tied to teacher evaluation by state statute now. Retaining what already works for us locally, specifically, our Pathwise Evaluation System works well. The majority of teachers are trained, it's just a small group that will come through in this last year. Next year would still need to be trained, and that's taken several years to accomplish. Training new staff on the new model, so again, that's very labor-intensive, and then finding and training peer coaches to support the process, because again, peer coaching and peer review would be part of the new system. And then next steps. So today, we're here to inform the board. We have met to inform the administrative team and the executive council for the union. Establish a collaborative working group made up of teachers, administrators, to research and design a teacher evaluation and peer review process. We have set our group, so we will begin that work in April. Continued attendance at the teacher evaluation regional meetings by Superintendent Kelly, Director Bennett, myself, and Diane Scully. And then adhere to the timeline of December twelve, 2012, through December 2013, to bring it forth to the board in January of 2014. All right, our hope, collaboration. Meeting people halfway is the most significant trip we can take. We don't work for each other, we work with each other. So we really are hopeful that we can come to a mutual agreement that's going to be beneficial for all of us.
Any questions or comments?
Questions?
It sounds like a big undertaking. I'm sure you'll do a fabulous job. Thanks for keeping us informed.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is the 2013-2014 school calendar, and we have Nicole Hallaby, Director of Student Services.
Thank you, Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's hard to believe another year is coming. It's just funny how that happens, isn't it? We developed a committee, as always, every year. We have parent representation from every building, teacher representation from every building, administrative representation, activities, as well as non-licensed representation. So we have a really wonderful group of people that come together every year to develop the school calendar. We met, we met three times, and we were able to, within the constraints of the contract and Minnesota State statute and laws, develop a calendar that I'm pleased to say had full consensus with every member around the table. We take our time and make sure we get nods, and if there isn't a nod, if there's a frown, we say, "What's going on?" They go back to their buildings and to their friends in the community and get input between the meetings, and we also send emails back and forth. As far as just some highlights, I'll be bringing it to you in April for approval. Some highlights is because Labor Day is nice and early this year, we'll be able to start on, we're recommending to start on Tuesday, September 3rd. It's not a late Labor Day. As far as where the Christmas holiday falls and the New Year's holiday falls, it looks like it's going to fall quite nicely for two-week vacation, because one of the things that the board has asked, and Superintendent Kelly reminds the committee, no two-day weeks. It's hard to do a lot of learning in two-day weeks, and it would break up family time too much. So it looked good. We checked with Director Burkus as far as getting staff development in and summer academy when they need to start, summer of 2014, and everything's going to fit very nicely together in this calendar.
Okay. Any questions?
Looks good.
Yeah, it looks great. Thanks. I know it was a lot of work, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Did you hear any talk about starting before Labor Day? I know some districts do that to maximize the time they can prepare for the MCAs and that sort of thing.
Right. We've been, prior to meeting with the committee, the superintendent, as well as directors and other interested parties, have been following the news to see what other, and following what other districts are doing. What I always like to do is, for the committee, find out what school boards have already passed their calendar for the following year, and we generally come out of the chute pretty quickly. Minneapolis always passes two years in advance, but because of the early start, we discussed it at the committee, but we felt it really wasn't as big of an issue as it was several years ago, when you remember, I brought it to you, and the day after Labor Day was the eighth of September, so that's an entire week. It also, we have to be cognizant of summer school. As you know, our buildings are being used all through this summer, as well as every summer, and so we had, you know, we get it cut pretty close with teachers returning, new teacher induction, teachers returning and finishing out summer school. So our buildings are never empty in the summer, but it is definitely something that we will discuss again for the following year.
Great, thank you. Good question. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is School Yard Garden Conference. We have Kristen Stunkel, Director of Community Education.
Chair Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm happy to bring to your attention, in your packet, the flyer or the brochure that came with the conference, the 2013 School Yard Garden Conference at the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum. Columbia Heights Public Schools was very involved with the planning and implementation of this conference. We were able to facilitate panel discussion and a lunchtime roundtable about summer programming. And then also, the Blooming Heights Edible School Yard was one of the case studies that was given about forty-five minutes of time in the afternoon. And out of this conference, both in the planning and since the conference, there have been many wonderful collaborations that have grown. I would like to also mention that Financial One Credit Union was able to sponsor one of our Highland teachers to attend the event, and then they also offered to be one of the collaborating sponsors for the conference. So a big thank you to Financial One Credit Union. This conference was really a great opportunity for Blooming Heights Edible School Yard for what we've learned in these past three years to be shared with a wider audience, and to be able to both learn from other gardens throughout the state of Minnesota, the whole state of Minnesota was represented. There were about two-hundred and forty registering or attending guests, and so it was well-attended on a very snowy day out at the arboretum, but everybody was very pleased with the event, and we were grateful to be such an important part of this conference. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Looks like a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you for representing us well.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to our action items. First thing is, first on our action agenda is the acknowledgement of contributions. My understanding is we need a motion to move it forward.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura. It is a resolution, right? Is there any discussion? If not, I'll read the resolution. Acknowledgement of Contribution Resolution, whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the proposed, to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of six-hundred seventeen dollars, seventy-two cents. And the background is, we had a donation of one-hundred seventeen dollars, seventy-two cents to Valley View Elementary from Denise Rivard for student needs, a donation of twenty-five dollars to Columbia Heights High School Varsity Activities Account from Fairview Sports, and Orthopedic Care for Student Needs. We had a donation of We had a donation of twenty books to Highland Elementary from Joyce David for Ice Cream and Books Family Event, estimated value of a hundred dollars. Donation of winter clothing to Columbia Heights High School and Highland Elementary from Lindsay Bennett for Student Needs, estimated value of two hundred dollars. Donation of seven Save-A-Tooth kits to the Activities Office by Dr. Sean Leidig, DDS, of Park Dental Silver Lake Clinic for Students as needed, with an estimated value of one hundred seventy-five dollars. The total physical year two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen monetary contributions to date is thirty-seven thousand sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. All right, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Larkin.
Hi.
Ms. Meyer.
Hi.
Mr. Landwehr.
Hi.
Ms. Lee.
Hi.
Mr. Bardell.
Hi.
Ms. Palmer.
Hi.
Thank you very much, that resolution has passed. All right. Next on our action item is the Integration Grant, the board will be asked to approve the Integration Grant. We have Dwayne Burkus, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, I was here at our last board meeting to talk about the integration plan and what our goals are with that, and there are four. And I won't go through all the details again, but just a reminder that we are working to close the achievement gap and to provide opportunities for integration of our students of color and our white students. That our integration dollars support many different programs, one of the main ones being Avid, but it also pays for much of our interpretive services, Urban and Cultural Liaison, salary, STEAM, some of our STEAM programming, many of our arts experiences, and our WeMet membership. So we're here tonight, or I'm here tonight, to ask for your approval of the budget so that we can submit it on its deadline of March fifteenth.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Lori, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? And the motion has carried. Thank you very much, Dwayne.
You.
All right, our next action item, Teachers' Propose for Unrequested Leave of Absence Resolution. Lindsay Bennett, Director of Human Resources, Bill Holmgren, Director of Finance and Operations.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. As has been mentioned, we have spent probably the last six weeks in staffing. And as part of that process, we do have teachers that do have to be placed on an unrequested leave of absence as part of the staffing process. Tonight is a resolution proposing placement of those teachers. They will have a chance to request an unemployment, or excuse me, an unrequested leave of absence hearing, we give them fourteen days, and then we will come back to you with the final resolution, depending on if we have a hearing or not. So tonight, we are here seeking approval of the resolution proposing placement of tenured teachers on unrequested leave of absence.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Lori. I guess I'll read the resolution, is that in order? Right. Mine's marked.
Okay. Mine isn't, that's why I mentioned it.
Thank you. Resolution proposing to place tenured teachers on unrequested leave of absence. Whereas a school district has experienced declining student enrollment, particularly at Columbia Heights High School, and whereas a school district's financial status and student enrollment numbers require reduction in certain teaching positions at high school, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number thirteen as follows. Teachers of said school district be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, effective at the end of two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year, no later than June thirty, two thousand and thirteen, pursuant to Minnesota Statute one twenty-two A point four-zero subdivision seven, and Article five, section eight of the current master agreement between Independent School District number thirteen and the Columbia Heights Federation of Teachers Local seven-ten. That said proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence is the result of discontinuance of positions, lack of pupils, or financial limitations, and is not the result of the implementation of an education district agreement. That written notice be sent to said teachers regarding the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, as provided by law, and said notice shall include a date for hearing, if requested, and be in substantially the form as on the attached notice. That each and all of the foregoing grounds of said notice are within the grounds for unrequested leave placement as set forth in Minnesota Statute one twenty-two A dot four-zero subdivision seven, and Article five, section eight of the current master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative are hereby adopted as fully as though separately set forth and resolved here. Are there any questions? All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Larkin.
Hi.
Ms. Meyer.
Hi.
Mr. Landwehr.
I abstain, I just received the names prior to our meeting, so I don't, I can't vote on an informed basis, so I want to abstain.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Bardell.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
And the resolution has passed. All right.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is MinDOT Safe Routes to School Grant Resolution. Kristen Stunkel, Director of Community Education.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board. On February twenty-sixth, I brought as an information item this resolution that I'm asking that you bring forward today as an action item and pass for support for our Columbia Heights Public School grant for the Minnesota Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Non-Infrastructure Grant for two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fifteen. This grant would provide curriculum and training for including bicycle riding and safety into the physical education classes at the elementary school level. And this grant would also provide training and equipment for the Achieve program to learn and implement bicycle maintenance for those elementary school bicycles. The bicycle maintenance will provide hands-on learning and skill training.
All right, do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Lori, correct? All right. It is a resolution, so I get to read again. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Pursuant to do-call notice thereof, a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District thirteen, State of Minnesota, was duly held in said school district on March twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, at seven o'clock PM for the purpose and part of adopting resolution to support the joint applications with local governmental agencies for the Safe Routes to School program. Resolution to support Columbia Heights Public Schools application for the Safe Routes to School program, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District thirteen, State of Minnesota, as follows. Whereas Independent School District number thirteen promotes the safety of students who walk or ride their bicycles to our schools, whereas the Minnesota Department of Transportation is administering a federal Safe Routes to Schools grant program, now therefore, the School Board of Independent School District thirteen supports the Columbia Heights Public Schools application for the Safe Routes to School program to be overseen by the Director of Community Education and the Director of Technology and Security. Any questions or comments?
I just want to say, what a great program. It's great for students' physical education and also responsibility, so.
Thank you.
It's fantastic.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right, would you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Larkin.
Hi.
Ms. Meyer.
Hi.
Mr. Landwehr.
Hi.
Ms. Lee.
Hi.
Mr. Bardell.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
And the resolution has passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a busy night tonight.
All right, next on our action item, our board policy is a second reading. The board will be asked to approve the following policies. Two oh-three point two, Order of Regular School Board Meeting. Four twenty-five, Staff Development. Six zero-eight, Instructional Service, Special Education. Six fifteen, Basic Standards Testing. Six eighteen, Assessment of Student Achievement. Eight oh-five, Waste Reduction. Eight oh-six, Crisis Manual. And these items were placed for, out for public comment, and they're now up for a second reading, so. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second that. Motion by Missy, seconded by Scott, any discussion? Yep.
I have a question on student achievement. Are we still looking at some point of integrating the ACT test as a measure of student achievement in college and career readiness?
We are looking at, the answer is yes to both.
For SAT?
Yes, we're looking at yes to both. We'll be looking at, for teacher evaluation and for principal evaluation, we might be looking at some of those things as factoring into the evaluation process. And we are working, actually, six twelve on looking at the plan in the Explorer Test and as predictors for the ACT. And so therefore, that is still in the mix as well.
Would that fit into this policy six eighteen at some point, or is that a procedural?
It's more of a procedural, unless we'd put it into the teacher evaluation process, then it would become something that would be mutually agreed upon between the union and the board.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that motion has carried. Thank you. Next on our agenda is repeal of policy six twenty-one, the board will be asked to repeal policy six twenty-one. My understanding is because of changes in the law since then, this is an old policy and we, it's no longer necessary, so I'll move that forward.
I'll second it.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Missy, any discussion?
It's always great when we can repeal a policy.
Agreed. Agreed.
I love repealing policies. We just get them shorter and shorter and shorter, so you can read them.
Agreed. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? And the motion is carried. All right. Last action item this evening is election of board chair. The board will elect a vice chair, sorry, election of board vice chair. Board will elect a vice chair. And yeah, I would like to open it up for nominations for a vice chair. Mr. Landwehr.
I nominate Director Meyer.
Director Meyer.
Member Meyer, sorry.
All right, Missy.
And I would like to nominate John Larkin.
All right. Are there any other nominees? All right. Guess we call the roll? Is that procedural? We have two nominees, Ms. Meyer and Mr. Larkin.
Do you want to close the nominations?
Yeah, we probably ought to do that. Thank you.
Before you close nominations, I guess, I just wanted to make a comment, I appreciate the nomination, Ted, but I just feel as a new board member, I still have enough to learn that
Somebody, I apologize, but the screen froze on me.
You're both new board members.
Can you see, John?
We can see you and hear you.
We can see you, John, can you see us? Can you see us, John?
It's frozen.
Should we take a recess? Okay. We're just dealing with some technology issues here.
First, it's written at the end of the meeting.
I did recommend it be moved up. You did recommend what? That it be moved up to the beginning of the meeting instead of at the end. How long do we need to wait? We probably should have talked about something like that.
Since it's our first time through, I think we're just going to see what we can do. They did trial runs before the meeting, it comes back and forth, so we'll just see.
And it worked fine.
Of course it did.
Mr. Murphy.
Because we always have to have this tension at the elections, so I was like, I want to just get it done. Huh?
Just like TV.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Now for a commercial break.
A big cliffhanger. Thank you so much for the water tonight, John, I really needed it.
Welcome to GoToMeeting, online meetings made easy. You are the first caller and will be placed on hold until the next caller arrives.
Easy for the computer to say, right? It actually is good technology, it's just all things.
You're at the mercy of the internet gods.
Yeah. I'm sure it never happens elsewhere.
Never.
It happened to me at the middle of the AMSCD, remember? When the computer went down when I was doing my presentation? Yes. Okay, yes, it did. Went down, but I was, it worked, eventually it came back up and I continued. Okay, that was my biggest fear.
Seeing none, all those in favor for recess till 8:30, say aye. Aye opposed?
No.
Motion carried. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we are back at approximately 8:28. We decided to come back just a couple of minutes early. Everybody is here. We have the school board member back on GoToMeeting on video conference. All the members are here, and the members of the public that were in the audience are back from our little break to fix some technical difficulties with our video conferencing. So.
Lori had the floor.
Lori had the floor before we, we went on a recess.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to say I appreciate the nomination, but I just feel for me personally, at this stage, being new, and with what I feel I would like to learn, I'm just not willing, I just don't want to accept a nomination for vice chair. I just don't feel it's a good fit for me at my first year here in, on the board. That's just my personal opinion, so, thank you, but I'd like to decline. It's okay.
It's up to you.
I prefer to do that for, like I said, my first year, just to.
All right.
Get my feet wet on some other things first, so.
All right. Are there any other nominees? Do I have a motion to close nomination?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Missy, seconded by Scott. If the only nominee is Mr. Larkin, Mr. Larkin is nominated to be vice chair. Congratulations, Mr. Larkin.
Now, if it's the only one, you don't need to vote.
Now, if it's only one nominee.
Okay.
Yep.
So he gets it by acclamation?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the rules.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Would it be possible for Mr. Larkin to talk a little bit about being a vice chair and his interest in vice chair?
Sure.
Hear that?
If Mr. Larkin's willing to do that, sure.
Absolutely. Just real briefly, as Lori reluctantly would accept that position as a new member, my hope would be that Scott Bardell will mentor me throughout the course of the year so that I can do my best and with no promises that I won't make mistakes, but I'm willing to learn and I'll do the best that I can.
Okay. Thanks, John. Now, we're on to board topics. Are there any other board topics? All right. Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:30 PM. Thank you very much.